Yeah, everyone, we're gonna start the meeting. I know Councilman Williamson's gonna be late. He gave me a call. So this is the legislation committee of the whole. May 3, 2023. We have Heather Mollott from the budget office. She wants to discuss a few things before we start discussing committee at all.
Just quickly.
Heather, you have it. Go ahead.
Thank you. Quickly, at your last council meeting, I mentioned I would be back down here tonight for Capitol. I'm just struggling a little bit with the bond resolutions. Mike Mahoney's out. He had his shoulder, something done with his shoulder. So I'm answering engineering questions on Useful Lives. And so it's taking me a little more effort than I normally have. So we will, I will be back here in two weeks. But as I mentioned, I think to Celeste and Michael and me, I will have that stuff out to you hopefully by the end of the week. So that if you have any questions, you can think about them and propose them. But tonight, there's only one, one transfer in your packet has to do with our youth department. As you may recall, Lonnie Jenkins retired and we had quite a large payout to him.
When did he retire?
Gosh, December.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, Chet took over. Chet took over. And so in doing so, Chet also works an awful lot of overtime and did this past year. It was kind of unexpected. And the mayor is looking to reduce that in this coming year. And so in moving those lines, that's basically what it is. It's for Chet's overtime and for the extra vacation payout. That's not, the whole 52 isn't for that. But we did hire an additional person there. And there was some crossover. I don't know if you have any questions?
Any questions on that, counsel?
I will be down in the next couple of weeks with some other large transfers. We always do police and fire. I'm just waiting for some final numbers on that, some final overtime that has to be journal entry then. And then also highway. So you'll see me down for that.
Is it? Thank you, Heather.
Thank you. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Committee of the whole, let's go from top to bottom on this and then if we want to take anything out or we want to discuss it. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 12 pieces here. And this one is dated 1/5/22, registration, posting of owner. Manageure information and designation of agent. Last one, test us.
Yeah, I'm actually gonna pull this. I'll reintroduce it then in the council.
You're gonna pull it?
Well, you mean discharge or?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, discharge.
What's that?
She's gonna, so that's that one. She's the very oldest one. She's gonna discharge it. It doesn't have a number, actually. Mine doesn't.
Next up is proposed ordinance number two. It's amending the comp, composition of the Bureau of Fire. Now, we have some new pieces there, correct? So this, this we could probably take out.
Yes, sir.
This is number two?
So this will be discharged as well.
The clerk will appreciate these discharges.
And that was dated 1/26/22.
1/28.
1/28/22.
I, I'm willing to, to discharge ordinance number 21. I can always redo it later, as Sam says.
Okay, any, any questions on discharging 21?
You see where I am?
Yep, got you. Thank you.
Okay, 21 will be discharged. Is this the 21?
No, it's the apprenticeship training.
Amendment section, let's see. If the, okay, that's one-way Kent Street, proposed ordinance number four. I understand we're gonna be taking this out tonight? We'll be voting on this?
Oh, we're voting on this one tonight, they want to?
Yeah, I did talk to.
You did?
Yeah, I did talk to the budget director. She said it's, it's good to go. You want to give her a call, that's fine. But I believe it is good to go tonight.
Can somebody remind me just why we do? I don't remember. It's been a while.
Well, they, they wanted to make sure we introduced everything that was going on in the park over there first. Before we changed anything. So this is gonna go right along with it. But you can check with her. I believe it's gonna come out. But I'll have the majority leader check with her. So we'll put that one on hold for now.
And then that's.
The next one?
Yep.
Discontinuance of apportionment, Cornelia Street. Easy for me to say. I believe this one's gonna come out tonight.
Okay.
You want to check on that one as well? Cornelia, I believe they're both good.
There's a one-way on Kent Street in committee and a one-way. It's okay with me? Just, Julia, just come down for a second.
Cornelia as well?
She's coming down.
Okay.
So we can ask her about the rest of it.
We have a proposed resolution 24, designation of official newspaper. I know we got an email, a late email today. So there may be some discussion on that. So I don't think we're gonna, we could discuss it now if you'd like.
I'd like to just leave it in committee until.
Leave it in committee?
Yep.
Okay, I did, I don't think the judge was on that.
Which, what number is that?
Yeah, you read the email.
But I did, I did forward it to him anyway.
Yep.
So I wanted to take a look at the legality of it.
He recommended still leaving it committee for now.
Committee?
Yep.
Can I just say, though, that I thought that, I don't know. I mean, it's fine with me if you want to leave it in committee, but.
I would like to touch on this, too, yeah.
I mean, we, we've gotten in touch with them. I mean, suddenly they're like, what? We, we've reached out to them.
I'm fine with leaving it.
And the person, somebody from Wisconsin is now complaining.
Well, just to keep things as smooth as possible right now, I do think we should just leave it in committee because we're not gonna change the papers right now. And just give them the opportunity to speak in case we do want to change the paper right now.
Well, you read the email, right? They stated.
There's also, there's also circulation problem or not. We, we didn't check all the specs on the newspaper we have now either. So there may be some issues with the newspaper we have now due to dispatch for circulation. There's also spec qualifications for that. I talked to the judge in a way in and he says he's gonna look into it and then he was gonna go from there.
So you mean, we need, we need circulation specs for the Sentinel, the daily Sentinel? I thought we did check into that because we had that publisher here and he said, he told us what their.
Oh, it's got me in writing. I didn't see told, I didn't see anything in writing. I didn't see any P schedule in writing. Did you guys see anything?
He sent something to President Galimi and I. So we can, I'm okay with doing this in committee for right now. But I did want to address that. It's just, I guess, put it on record that I've been trying to reach out to the OD for various issues for probably the past year now. And calls just kept going unanswered. So I'm glad to see the email that we did receive today. I just hope that if that's, that would need to be the new norm going forward is if we did keep coming.
Contact person right now.
Yeah, so, but I do want to keep, definitely want to revisit the daily Sentinel as being part of this, too, though. But yeah, we'll get those.
Just when you thought you were safe.
Thank you.
Can I just look at the legislation for a minute? I just want to.
Here, you want to see it?
Yes, please. So just want to look at it. Gotta make sure that's one-way going north. Northbound. Northbound from Elizabeth and.
Cornelia Street.
Cornelia Street is the one reversing back, right?
Disconnect the proportional, Cornelia Street.
Yeah, we have to charge it. I don't, we haven't got to it yet.
Was it sure that we're.
Yes, the very first one, yeah.
Want to ask Mahoney?
Number two. Yeah, I go call him.
All right.
Date in one.
All right, so we're good to go on proposed ordinance number four.
We're gonna check Mahoney for both.
Let me call.
For one-way?
Just call him. Here, pick that one.
I, I know on that one.
You're positive? All right, we're good on, we're good on Kent Street. We're gonna check Cornelia.
We're good on Kent, okay. Okay, we have three pieces here, one, three, and four ordinances regarding the amending of the fire complement. I know the judge had some, you know, discussion about it last time we talked about it. So I think we, we should have a discussion on it and what piece we want to take out and use. Does anybody have any, any concerns about which one we want to use? Or should we wait for the judge? We can discuss it at the six o'clock meeting?
Of course, the administration offered us ordinance number one. And I think that's the one that also helps us solidify the grant. And if there's any issues, they would have to attend to the issues. I don't lose any of those guys and I don't lose a dime of that grant money.
Yeah.
So it also makes it very clear that it gives the council in the future the opportunity to make sure that those positions are funded by the next budget that comes three years from now. It gives the council notification of it, which is good because it's approximately just under, it's around a 3% tax increase. It's around $700,000 a year. That $700,000 equates the two-plus tax increase, so.
Yeah.
We just want to make sure that the council's aware of it. They know it's coming down in the budget. And I think the piece that the law department put out to the table covers all those avenues.
All right. But I, I did know that, just want to ask him about the sunset clause in there because he did say something about it. I don't know if it's legal to do, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm okay with using that piece. I know the number's right, so I'm, I'm good with that, of 135 total.
Just for clarification, so what you would be doing was you would be eliminating the sunset clause because you would be eliminating those three positions. So that's why it's important to understand that you're eliminating those three positions out of a sunset clause before you approve the eight positions for the safer grant.
Okay, all I'm saying is that we revise that sunset because we're still, right now, we would be out of, if, we have to have that sunset in there because.
Right, that's why it would be effective July 1st. Because all the three people did retire by now.
Sunset's gotta be there.
So the.
It's gotta be there. So number one, we need.
No, you don't need the sunset. They're already retired. So it would be effective July 1st.
Well, the, but legally, they could come back within 30 days. I know they can because I know a couple.
Right, hence the reason why it's effective July 1st minus the sunset clause. So that you're eliminating the sunset clause out of the legislation, period.
Why don't we, why don't we let the judge discuss that one and then we could? I, I'd like to get this sealed tonight if we can.
Did the judge tell us the other night?
Well, let, let's see what he's got to say because I'm kind of confused.
But. We did the sunset clause originally because we needed to add those three positions.
We have to tweak that on the bottom, whatever we have to do, let's, let's let him make the decision.
I think.
Legally, what we can do.
The one that is from the law department is.
All right. I'm good to go with it, as long as he says good, as long as he says okay.
The next one, we have to, we're just, Cornelia Street, Councilman to bring.
Wait a second, going back to that other thing there, you keep saying that. And I, I'll agree with you, but the judge, last meeting, he said, no, don't use that.
No, he, right, he didn't understand these.
Yeah, once he confirms it, I'm good.
Right, he'll, he'll confirm.
I'm not voting for it because guess what? The sunset clause doesn't need to be in there. Whose floor, whose, whose meeting is this?
Frank, as the floor, because he was just talking. Go ahead.
Our next thing, ordinance number 11, we'd like to keep it committee. We need Stephanie here just to give us the specifics and make sure that the, the calculations are correct and the footage and the boundaries, all right?
Got it.
Perfect.
So we're going to, I just want to go back.
Cornelia Street remaining.
That's gonna stay in committee and, but ordinance number four.
We like to.
We're gonna go ahead and pull that.
Kent Street, Kent Street.
Okay.
Okay?
Last one, test, anything on the fire complement?
Yeah, no, I just, because if you pass this ordinance, that means that the sunset clause stays in there. So you still have to revisit this ordinance come July 1st. You can't leave the sunset clause in there. You, you have to go vote on it.
Well, once it sunsets, though, it sunsets.
It does not sunset because the ordinance stays the same. That's the whole point. Remember, we couldn't, and this was the argument back when, when I passed, when we passed the original legislation for the fire department, that it was contingent on the safer grant, right? It didn't make a difference because according to Zach Oran at the time, you had to come back because the complement has to be adjusted no matter what. So even with that sunset clause in there, come July 1st, you have to eliminate that out of the legislation. You can't leave that in there because it would still be ordained, the above complementing includes it. Even though it says July 1st, that's why it's important to remove that sunset clause.
Yeah.
We'll take that up.
The law department, they said something different.
Frank, you don't have to have a law degree. You have common sense on how to write legislation.
Let me just say one thing. Corp counsel will be here?
Absolutely.
Okay, so then we'll, we'll have that discussion. We're gonna finalize it tonight. Whatever piece we use, we gotta get to the end of it. All right, that's a good thing. All right, we're gonna go with the sale in 921 Blaine Dyna Street, right?
It looks good.
That's coming out?
Yep. White Moon Street's good.
Ordinance nine?
And what's this DOT grant? Oh, it's in from the last meeting, okay. Then we already, the DOT grant, was that already accomplished?
That was on Monday.
Can we put it?
And we put it in committee.
But it's according to Zach, oh, Derek, Derek was here? Wasn't this already done or what happened?
Well, he did say that we could apply as a city. And it doesn't have to be for that specific area downtown. It could be for South Utica or another main artery that they may want to, you know, do road diet or whatever, complete street. So I don't know.
I clar, I clarified with the planning department from the county. And they did say that while they do address the city streets, they address the countywide seats between Anata County in its entirety.
We may get a little piece of that $400,000. We might be able to get a little bit more money if we did it on our own. So I don't know, whatever you guys want to do, but.
It's not, it's not binding. At the end of the day, the administration is the one that has to ask, that has to do.
We're just requesting a resolution, that's all it is.
Well, we gotta get it checked out by corporate counsel.
Who do you gotta get checked out?
Right.
Frank, it's a resolution asking the administration to apply for it.
To apply for the grant.
Once they apply for it.
Same thing we did with the fire department.
Saying that we support their application.
I understand what you say it says, but I want to make sure that's okay. We, did it, did Garavone talk about this yet?
Garavone talk about what?
Did Garavone approve it?
It's a resolution, Frank.
Samantha, I don't understand resolution.
That's all we're asking, that's all we're asking is for the mayor of the city of Utica to apply for the grant.
The corp counsel will be here, so we'll be able to, we'll be able to check with them to see if it's okay for the.
That's all.
But just, but just for, but just for clarification purposes, even if you pass the resolution, it doesn't mean that the administration has to apply for the safer grant.
Correct.
For the safer streets grant.
Correct.
The only thing that you're asking him to do is to take a look at it, see if the city could apply for it. And then they have to go through the process. We can't apply for grants on our behalf.
Correct, it's a request, that's all we're doing.
And then if he decides to apply for it, then a resolution would come on behalf of the council and they would submit it. I mean, I, I just, I find it irritating, Frank, that I've been a council person now for nine years.
It gives me more irritating here, bold headedness, just to ask the judge or the corporate counsel if this is legal or not.
Right, that's all.
That's all it is.
Oh, right, just like all the order ordinances that we passed.
That's all I'm asking.
Last, last Monday, last Monday.
Okay, I think, anything else you want to discuss in the committee of the whole?
Those were approved by the law department, too.
All right, all right, all right. Anything else we want to discuss? Anybody?
Can I just mention something, though, I'm down here. There's a lot being said about how much the striping of downtown is costing. So I, I've spoken with Mike Mahoney and Austin. The total is gonna be between $200,000 and $220,000.
Oh, okay, because just for clarification purposes, when Austin was at our meeting, at our last meeting, he did say it was gonna cost about $1.1 million.
Yeah. And, and I don't know. So the, the temporary striping we did last fall was $70,000. And I think it's gonna be a little higher, gonna be a little higher, so it'll be around 80. We also have to grind, do some grinding up near the Stanley. And then they'll come back with the epoxy in, in several months and that will be the more permanent. So the estimate right now, I'm looking for a paper estimate, which they don't have for me, is between $200,000 and $220,000.
So maybe he was talking about total road reconstruction if they were to do it, which that kind of made sense?
Yeah.
I mean, to just stripe the roads permanent without possibly repaving and doing that was kind of.
And I think he might be confused because there's a lot going on with, with DOT and the lights. So we may have to do some, we may have to do some light work, so I think he's confused. Because I did talk.
All right, thank you.
But he did say $1.1 million.
You're usually good about the numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We just saved this $800,000. All right, that'll, that'll be the end of the meeting. We'll meet again at 6:00. Thank you all.
...through urban renewal.
For four years.
What's that?
I was on a sign for four years because we couldn't make it a car wash and it wasn't even in the urban renewal property.
Correct.
We've been after them to clean up the block across Oscar Street from the facility.
Listen, it's absolutely disgusting.
That is still city-owned. We allowed them to use it. We have, what we have sent to them, gave them May 1st as the deadline, or we were gonna go in and do it and take it out of their restore, the $2 million restore grant that they got. Because that actually is a grant to the city, not to Bowers technically.
Bowers also has...
So they didn't receive it in full yet?
They didn't receive it at all.
Okay.
What about the, even part of the, component of the asbestos removal for 1900 Bleeker?
The work is done. That, the abatement of the asbestos has been done.
Right.
But they've got boards, insulation board, they've got stone, they've got dirt on that site.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and work.
And they own the parking lot too, or is that, that was part of the, that was part of the sale, the parking lot across the street?
No, he just said that's where...
I know, okay, so then maybe I misheard, because I was thinking of something else, so can you just reiterate that?
We own the block on the west side of Oscar Street.
Okay.
They own 1900 Bleaker, which is the building on the east side of, that falls between Oscar Street and...
Coler...
Or Coler.
Thank you.
I mean, it's just...
So Dave Short and his crew are, we need to figure out trucking, because Dave can't do the trucking, but we're likely gonna go in and clean the, the site on the west of Oscar.
It's just insulting, because I mean, the city's been very great to Bowers' development, and to know that they've just spent $3 million on a private sale for the old ECS building.
For which one?
The old ECS building.
Yeah.
I mean, $3 million to purchase everything and not finish any of the projects that they have inside the city is, is pretty bad.
The IDAs in the process of filing back some of their incentives that they've given.
Well, those are the pilot programs, so on and so forth, which...
There's, there's, things happening, which is why they're not really communicating with us.
Did they sell to a medical supply building at one time?
No, that was, that was, oh, that's another thing too, so they're not, are they still in the process of purchasing this from the city?
Of what?
The hotel.
Kennedy Garage.
The garage. We've provided the paperwork, and they're currently reviewing it.
I mean, we should, we should definitely pull that sale from that too. I mean, I understand that the politics that surrounds that building with the hospital and so and so forth, the county and all the air rights, but they shouldn't have the right to, we wouldn't sell a property to somebody that had code violations inside the city through a renewal agency. I can't see how we would let them even purchase another building without completing eight other projects that they've left undone inside the city.
Understood.
My answer would be, it's in litigation. It's out of our hands.
I wouldn't say it's necessarily in litigation, but I would say it's reached a point where, where the attorneys are talking to each other.
All right, thank you.
It's not actually in court yet, nothing's been filed.
Thank you.
Stephanie, did you get anything from Stephanie?
I'll let you know.
I'm, I'm taking a picture of the legislation senator, how about that?
That's fine. I'm just checking with Sarah if there was a mix-up in the description, because I'm pretty sure we have the final. Because this, they're pushing to get it done.
I know they want to get it done, that's, I, I understand.
So, I don't want to wait another, and I, today's the third, okay. Because it's been a month. I'm pretty sure that this, if, if there is a mistake, but I'm having the clerks check to see if we have a map with the memo.
You did?
All right, I sent the tour, so we got two-pronged attacks. Let's see what happens, all right? Right now, we remain in committee until we get verification, okay? Is there any additional discussions right now, guys? Or motion closed?
Oh, no, there's definitely more discussion than the fire order says.
Go ahead.
All right.
You want, you want to...
I got the floor.
You want to discuss, you want to discuss your legislation? Go right ahead, Samantha.
So, after discussing with Judge Garamone, I think that, and I'm gonna suggest to the council that we, we, we do not vote on ordinance number one, that increases the complement to 135, that includes the sunset clause. In order to have the legislation be cut and dry, so we know what positions they're writing to, I would suggest pass ordinance number three first, with the effective date of July 1st, 2023, and then pass ordinance number four with the effective date of July 1st, 2023. And the reason that we did that is because the three positions that we did temporary, all the firemen or lieutenants, I don't, I'm not sure of their positions, but the members of the department retired. They do have the possibility to come back. The councilman with the bringo had stated 30 days after they retire. So in order to satisfy, making sure that they don't have the possibility of coming back and ruin the adjustment of the complement, it, it would be, it would make more sense to pass the ordinance number three and take it down to 124, and then pass the ordinance to 132 to satisfy the safer grant.
All set, Sam?
All set.
Stephanie?
I would need to double-check with the fire chief, but my understanding was that the reason we did it with the sunset clause is because they could not hire anyone per the agree, under the, per the understanding from the safer grant. That's why they put the sunset clause in from that date. I do know that they can't hire anyone prior to then, and then once the, I think they only have to start performance on the safer grant. I want to say it's either the end of July or beginning of August. So if you're gonna do that, my suggestion is to leave it as is, and then just put the increase of the eight, because they will sunset, you can just have the ordinance be the one...
Ordinance is can't sunset. There's no reverter clause in ordinance.
Samantha, would you please let her finish?
Sure.
Thank you. I appreciate if you'll let her finish.
32, 35?
Stephanie?
So, my recommendation then is if, if you want to do it that way, I understand that it's not automatic, is I would wait until that date. You can pass legislation today and say it'll be effective on August 1st, or whatever it is, the complement change. The way that the ordinances are written, if you change it and remove the sunset clause at that point in time, you're amending the ordinance entirely.
Right. So the, the administration and the law department feels confident in number one, is that correct?
Hold on, I...
Because it came from the law department?
Yes, but what I'm saying is if you, if you want to pass something different than that, I would leave it the way it is right now, and pass it so that you just add eight positions without the sunset clause, starting effective August 1st, or whatever day.
We'll make it simple. Which one's best for us to pick?
I would suggest the one that I prepared.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much, okay.
What's the judge say? Judge, can we please explain this? You just went through...
I, you already explained it, two meetings.
And that's what I mean, I mean, it's mine, because the complement won't be 135.
My understanding was that your complement was gonna be 132, you were adding eight charges from the safer grant. You did put on three EMTs, but there's an ordinance here correcting that, changing the number to... It's a little confusing, because the one thing I maintain is what case law says and law says. The common counsel controls the complement, and it does it by ordinance. Whatever the common counsel puts as a figure, that is the figure, and E and A will pay that figure, and they can't not pay that figure. So you gotta be very careful. Are you hiring 11 people, or are you hiring eight? Eight. That's, that's how I understand it. Well, the three EMT things has to be confirmed, and the eight has to be confirmed. And I get out of that 132, I think that's what I said the last time. If you, 135, looks like you're hiring 11 people. That was my understanding. Now, I did draw these changes. But I looked them over, and I think at the last reading, I stood on 132. That was my understanding, because I, all I have in my mind is that the state's, the grant is eight people. Now, 11. And so, if you're absorbing three people, you're absorbing that. These are people who are not, that's something to be quiet, as I understand it. So, that would bring you to that, the other figure of 134, I believe.
Stephanie, almost.
And 124 is the complement to start with with eight.
So...
That's the way I understand it. And as far as that, that temporary law, the temporary law cannot change the complement. That, that one thing that Mr. Carcobo said was, was true, that that was done, I don't want to use the term gimmick, but it was a gimmick because of a situation where you might have people that, and they could pay them, and go to school. All right, well, that's, I think that resulted by some attrition or something. All right. So I think 124 and eight is 132. If you've got a different figure, and you come out with something else, I don't know how we got to 135. And remember, the taxpayers of the city Utica, once you say 135, have to pay 135. Have to. And those positions have to be filled. Have to, as the law says. E and A doesn't have a choice in it. And they cannot refuse to fill. So where are you filling, 132 or 135? I think you're filling 132.
No, honestly, we fill 135. I'll give the third apartment actually three people.
Stephanie?
I know what, I changed my mind. I'm for ordinance number one.
Well, that's where I'm...
Stephanie at the floor. Wait, so he's done. He's not done yet. Judge, all set? All set? Yeah, he's all set.
Like I said, I would need to talk to the fire department, but I believe there's some issues with the safer grant with how we do the, with the, what was already passed back in March with the sunset clause. If you want to pass proposed ordinance four, that's perfectly fine. It will remove the sunset clause, but my suggestion is that you just make the ordinance effective July 2nd.
July 1st?
July 1st.
Okay.
Well, I would not suggest passing ordinance number three.
Why is that?
Because we...
Because it would be effective July 1st still, because then it would satisfy the 30 days from the time that everybody retired.
I think we're just going to take the recommendations from the law office. Because if they screw up the safer grant, it's their fault, not ours.
That's what, the grant.
Right, the grant's ours, it's August 1st, so technically it would be effective August 19.
All right, any other discussions?
The state in committee until...
We're gonna move, we're gonna move number one.
You can amend it. Let's break one's of nobody.
We're gonna vote, we're gonna move number one. Thank you. Any other questions? Any other discussions?
I'm okay with moving number one. Judge, can you just clarify? That the sunset clause does not automatically revert July 1st, even though that it says it in there? That the council will have to come back July 1st and amend the ordinance to 132?
Take it probably, you're trying to be clear.
Yeah, I'm talking to you.
Take it to clarify.
I said that, I, the time you called last time, I said, you ought to take that ordinance and dismiss it. I mean, you gotta, you gotta tell me you have this temporary thing there, which I don't believe, think is the way you do things with the fire department or police department. I think, whatever you say the complement is, that's the complement.
Either way, ordinance number four takes out those three positions, no matter what.
I, I, no matter how you get there, I, I thought we were...
Let everybody take confidence.
I'm more than, I'm more than happy to add in three extra positions. That'll be one way to follow.
Ordinance one is saying 135.
Yeah, more. We want more, yeah.
Yeah, but you gotta pay it, once he's saying it.
July 1st, it goes down 132.
No, it does not. There is not an automatically reverter clause in ordinance.
We have to vote for it. All right, is there any, yes. It's the way it's supposed to be done, according to the safer grant. But you have the administration and, what do you call it, making sure that it's done right.
Technically, your complement is now 135, even without the safer grant.
We've hired, we've hired three people right now. We weren't supposed to hire three people for the safer grant.
Yeah, that's fair.
What I'm trying to say is...
But those three, those guys retired.
Samantha, again, you're interrupting.
Not interrupting, but it's not accurate.
We can wait, we can wait till the fire chiefs are here. I'll prepare a memo. That's fine.
You want to keep all of them in committee till you get the memo prepared?
That's fine.
That's fine. All right, we'll do that. Thank you very much.
It is ridiculous. Um, any other discussions?
Any other piece of legislation? All right, the pre-meeting caucus is now closed, and let's mingle. Thank you.
Seven oh three, on May third, two thousand and twenty-three, I'm going to call this meeting of the common council to order. Clerk, please call and roll.
Hi, Yellow, Burmester, Friend, Miola, Irvin, Beatrice, Williamson, Klosmo, Testa, Debrango, Galimi, all present.
Please rise for the blood of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the council.
Blood allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic of the world.
First order of business this evening is the minutes from the previous meeting.
Could I make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes, please, Mr. President?
Okay, is there a second? All right, Burmester is seconding that. Does the council also accept the minutes from the previous meeting? All right, no one's opposed. Minutes have been dispensed. They're posted, I need code three sixty for the council and public to view. Next order of business is public hearing. We do have a public hearing this evening for the sale of nine twenty-one Blaine Dynastree. Sale of three, oh, this is actually wrong. It's not three eighteen White'sboro Street. It is... The sale of three eighteen dot twenty-two dash three dash two White'sboro Street. And we... Cornelia, yes. And we also have on the public hearing docket this evening the ordinance providing for the discontinuance of a portion of Cornelia Street. And in that legislation, it is dated that the public hearing will be tonight, May third, two thousand and twenty-three. No one has signed up to speak on any of those properties and or ordinances, so the public hearing is now closed. And I will take motions from the floor to pull them from committee.
Mr. President, I'd like to move ordinance number eleven, the discontinuation of a portion of Cornelia Street.
We have a second to pull that from committee, any opposed? Okay, the ordinance providing for the discontinuance of a portion of Cornelia Street is on the floor for a vote. Now therefore be it ordained, the city of Utica hereby discontinues the use of property described below as a city street. The piece or parcel described as follows, beginning at a point on the easterly highway boundary of Cornelia Street, set point standing at the intersection of the easterly highway boundary of Cornelia Street with the northerly highway boundary of Lafayette Street, thence sixty-eight nineteen thirty-three west, thirty-seven thirty-three feet, to a point standing on the westerly highway boundary of Cornelia Street, et cetera. The above described parcel containing a point zero six acre of land, more or less, discontinuous subject to any and all easements of record or assumed, including utilities and rights of ways, accepting and reserving there from any and all easements and right of ways. Further ordained, that ordinance number sixty-nine of two thousand and twenty-two is hereby rescinded, appealed and annulled. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Do we have any other motions?
Mr. President, I'd like to remove from committee ordinance number seven, the sale of nine twenty-one Blaine Dynastree.
Do we have a second? Councilperson Friend, has a second on that, any opposed? The ordinance approving the designation of Hazam Muperez as an eligible and qualified project sponsor pursuant to Article fifteen of GML for the purpose of the sale of nine twenty-one Blaine Dynastree is on the floor for a vote to a sum of five thousand dollars from U R A.
Nineties adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to remove ordinance number nine, the sale of three one eight two two dash three dash two White'sboro Street from committee, sir.
Second for Burmester, any opposed? The ordinance for the sale of three eighteen dot twenty-two dash three dash two White'sboro Street to Willie Smith for a sum of two hundred and fifty dollars from U R A for the purpose of landscaping is on the floor for a vote.
Nineties adopted.
All right, moving on. Public comment period is now closed. No one signed up. We do not have any common council guests this evening. We do not have any communications from the mayor, some reports from the city officers. Stephanie DiGiorgio, corporate counsel.
Nothing to report.
Fire chief?
I would just like to say that Senator Schumer, Senator Gillibrand, Congressman Williams have supported some congressionally directed spending initiative for the Utica Fire Department for four point four sixty million for the construction of a new firehouse and emergency operations center. I would like to thank them for their support on that. I know that we got a lot of steps, it's just the first step of many that can be taken, but we are seriously looking at investing into our infrastructure and trying to update a fire station.
Okay, very good. U P D?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Irvin?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Closes the reports from the city officers. Do we have any cash reports?
We do not.
All right. Petitions, remonstrances, and appeals. First district, councilmember Katie Ayello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank the mayor tonight for offering to match everybody, all the elected officials' donations to Anita Stephen Swans. We were very excited to donate, and yeah, that's all I have tonight, thank you.
I think he's up to nineteen hundred in match, I think, between Bill Morehouse, the controller, and the council.
Good show.
Second district, councilmember Robert Burmester, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take this opportunity, next Wednesday night, we got a Westside meeting over at Five Points. It's going to mark the one year anniversary of the Westside new group. Kudos to Amy and Anthony for all the hard work they've done. Next week, we're going to have the candidates from the school board, I guess there's six of them, so I'm told, so it's going to be an interesting and exciting meeting if anybody can come. You're more than welcome, and that's all I have at this time, thank you.
Thank you very much. Third district, councilmember Celeste Friend, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Following Mr. Burmester, the South Utica Neighborhood Association, this Monday night, the eighth, is also having a forum for the school board candidates. They have a new location, it's a space called The Other Side. It is directly next to Cafe Domenico in the same building, and that is at seven P M. this Monday night with the school board candidates. And I do want to encourage everyone to vote in the school board, which is, I think, two weeks from yesterday, it's on the sixteenth. We'll all be voting on the budget and on the school board. So I hope that everybody will turn up for that very important election, thank you.
Thank you very much. Majority leader, fourth district, Frank Gioli, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to echo Katie Ayello's statement, councilwoman Ayello's statement for the mayor. Thank you very much for matching funds, I know the Stephen Swans is well deserved.
As long as they're elected officials, of course, the mayor stated that he would match it. Next, I'd like to thank my colleagues, councilman Debrango, also councilman Williamson. We are correcting the problem that a lot of people on Pond Lane had with their drainage. Also Stephanie DiGiorgio, sorry, Stephanie Wors, there's so many Stephaneys. Engineer, our engineering department, she was there yesterday, and we saw collapsed two-foot main going underneath the road on Albany Street. That's why Albany Street, it will be closed from Pond Lane to Crittison Road because this weekend they are going to repair it and put a three-foot culver pipe in there that drains into the ravine. Again, colleagues, thank you very much for assisting me on this, and I'm pretty sure that a lot of people on Pond Lane will be very happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Fifth district, councilmember Venice Irvin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just like the other two districts, as I've already mentioned, we're going to have the school board official forum, and that'll be next Tuesday at six o'clock at the Jewish community, oh, wait a minute, the Midtown Utica Center and that sixty Paxton Street, and that's next Tuesday at six o'clock.
Thank you. Sixth district, councilmember Joe Beatrice, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. President. I received some very good news from my district last week that we will, my area will be receiving seventy-five thousand dollars in flood mitigation funds, came from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. I think this is great news, it's basically to, it's money, I believe, that according to Stephanie and talking to the mayor, that, you know, they'll be using a lot of that to doing a lot of the maintenance of the work that we've already done over the past couple of years. So this is a great win for the area, and I just wanted to announce that, you know, let people know that that's out there. So thank you, that's all I have tonight.
Councilor Large, minority leader, Mark Williamson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have nothing to add.
Thank you. Councilor Large, Samantha Klosmo Testa.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'm all set this evening.
Thank you. Councilor Large and president pro temp, Frank Debrango.
All set, Mr. President.
All right, I'm just going to wrap it up and just make the official announcement once again that any elected officials, as announced by the mayor, who donate to the Stephen Swan Humane Society this evening during the telethon will have their funds matched by the mayor this evening, so. Let's hope we raise a lot to Stephen Swan Humane Society, thank you. It's for our good cause. On to our legislation this evening. Proposed resolution number one, someone like to move it.
On the rise in sale?
I'll move that.
Okay. It is moved by Friend, seconded by Miola. Resolution number one is authorizing the sale of wine and beer to the Jewish Community Federation of the Mohawk Valley. Be it resolved that permission to sell beer and wine and exemption from the provisions of section two fifteen four three subdivision C, one, two, and three regarding open containers of alcoholic beverages is granted to Jewish Community Federation of the Mohawk Valley. Name of event is Judica. Date of the event is Sunday, June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, twelve to six P M. Location, twenty-three Ten O'Niner Street. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Next piece?
Mr. President, I'd like to move resolution number two, please.
Second, Mr. President.
Second for Miola. This is another authorization of sale of wine and beer. It's timed to the Utica Zoo for Wine in the Wilderness, Saturday, June third, two thousand and twenty-three, six P M. to nine P M. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to move proposed resolution number three, please.
Second, Mr. President.
Okay. This piece is authorizing the sale of wine and beer to the Utica Zoo for Sunset Sips, Friday, July seventh, fourteenth, twenty-one, twenty-eight, from five to seven, and Friday, August fourth, eleventh, eighteenth, and twenty-fifth, from five to seven. Again, the Utica Zoo, your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to move proposed resolution number four, please.
Second, Mr. President.
This is another wine and beer permit for the Utica Zoo for Brew Fest, August fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, six P M. to nine P M. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Mr. President, could I please move proposed resolution number five?
Second, Mr. President.
All right. This is a sale of wine and beer to the Utica Center for Development, City of Utica, July fourth celebration, Tuesday, July fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, from five P M. to ten P M. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Mr. President, could I please move proposed resolution number six?
Second, Mr. President.
Okay, this is authorizing the sale of wine and beer to Saint Mary Mount Carmel slash Blessed Sacrament Parish. This is for Friday, July fourteenth, five to ten, Saturday, July fifteenth, five to ten, Sunday, July sixteenth, eleven A M. to three P M. Six forty-eight J Street.
Nineties adopted.
Mr. President, could I please move proposed resolution number seven?
Second, Mr. President.
Okay. This is another authorization of sale of wine and beer to Mary Mother of Our Savior Parish, Thursday, August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, Friday, September first, two thousand and twenty-three. Those are both four P M. to ten P M. And Saturday, September second, twelve P M. to ten P M. To Bart Navin. Your votes. Councilperson Colasmo Testa, there we go.
Nineties adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to move proposed resolution number eight, please.
Second, Mr. President.
Authorizing the sale of wine and beer to the Santa Rosalia Society, September ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, three P M. to eleven P M. Sunday, September tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, nine A M. to three P M. Seven oh one J Street, Santa Rosalia Chapel. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to move proposed ordinance number nine, please.
E and A transfer, second, Mr. President.
All right, this is an authorization for the sale of wine and beer at E and A meetings. No.
That would help. It's a little early, though.
Yeah, I'm just kidding. No, this is to adjust for unexpected retirement payout for youth director and overtime. This is from multiple different accounts, youth wages, youth travel, Bertolini Electric, softball contractual, and Ski Chalet Electric for youth salaries and youth overtime. That's the transfer in. Youth salaries, we have fifty-two thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars, and youth overtime pay going in at twenty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. It's an ordinance for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three budget year. Your votes. Must be unanimous.
Nineties adopted.
Mr. President?
Any pieces in committee?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to pull ordinance number three out of committee.
Okay. Let me get to ordinance number three. Is there a second?
Mr. President, I'd just like to ask our chief, Scott, to state in record that all the amendments will not have any impact to the sacred grant and, of course, Samantha's amendments.
Chief?
Yeah, so...
Chief, yourself, you have the floor.
So what we're looking for is a, the complement to be adjusted on July first to one thirty-two for the final...
We can do that in number four, just add July first to it, chief. Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. And then the original grant was applied for, with our complement at one twenty-four, so that's what that needs to be added. So we got to go from one twenty-four to one thirty-two.
Thank you, chief. So you're okay with three and four, correct, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So we are pulling, there's a motion to pull three or four right now?
Yes.
Three? I'm asking, which one?
Yep, three.
Three. Is there a second? Joe's the second. Joe's the second?
Yep.
Okay, just reiterate. It's okay. Any opposed to pulling that from committee? All right.
Mr. President, I do have to make an amendment on the floor.
That's fine. Let me just at least read the title now that it's out. Ordinance amending composition of the Bureau of Fire. Be it ordained that two dash two dash one sixty of Utica City Code regarding the fire department composition is hereby amended to read as follows. The two changes are firefighter, paramedic, and firefighter slash EMT goes from eighty-four to eighty-one, adjusting the total complement from one twenty-seven to one twenty-four. Okay, any amendments from the floor?
Sure. I'd like to make an amendment that instead of shall take effect immediately, that this ordinance take effect July first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Is there a second?
You got the wrong one. It's number four, same.
Nope, same thing.
All you want to do is same thing.
Same thing, yep.
Yeah, that way it's...
So you said July one, two thousand and twenty-three?
All at once.
Yep.
Okay. Any opposed to the amendment? Okay, the proposed ordinance number three is now read, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall take effect July first, two thousand and twenty-three. Your votes.
Are we voting on the amendment or on the entire text?
Oh, I'm sorry. Vote on the amendment. Oh, no, I said any opposed. So, yeah, it's amended. That's why I read it as amended. Sorry.
Just trying to be sure.
It's all the key.
Nineties adopted.
Should have another Mr. Goodbar.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to pull ordinance number four out of committee.
Second.
Ah. I'm going to give that one a celeste. I heard it first. All right, any opposed to pulling that from committee?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'd like to make amendment on the ordinance.
Okay, this ordinance amending the composition of the Bureau of Fire currently reads, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall take effect immediately. Your amendment?
The ordinance shall take effect, instead of ordinance shall take effect immediately, it shall take effect July first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay. We have a second from Miola. Any opposed? Okay, it's amended. So this currently reads firefighter, paramedic, and firefighter EMT going from eighty-one to eighty-nine, total complement going from one twenty-four to one twenty-three, one thirty-two. Be it further ordained that this ordinance shall take effect July first, two thousand and twenty-three. Keep your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to discharge ordinance number one, reading ordinance amending composition of Bureau of Fire. Second.
Second for Miola. Any opposed? That is discharged. Thank you. Clerks, please note that's taken from committee.
Mr. President, I'd also like to discharge introductory local law number one of two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Reads registration and posting of owner and manager info and designation of agent.
Okay. Miola seconded that. Any opposed to discharging that? Okay.
Mr. President, I'd like to discharge ordinance number two, ordinance amending composition of the fire department back in two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, any opposed? We did forget to do one piece. I'm getting there. Kent Street.
Yeah, she's a...
Yeah, hold on.
Okay, good.
I just, I have one more piece that I'd like to pull out of committee. Proposed resolution number one, grant for the Department of Transportation safe street request.
Okay.
Just for clarification, it's just, it's just asking the mayor to...
Any opposed to pulling this from committee? No one's opposed? Okay, it's on the floor for a vote. I will summarize it as soon as I get it out here.
I don't have a copy of it.
Nineties adopted.
Okay. That was requesting the City of Utica to apply for a grant, the U S D O T, for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three safe streets and roads for all discretionary grant conduct comprehensive safety action plan for the City of Utica. It's passed.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to pull ordinance four, one-way streets, out of committee.
Second, Mr. President.
Any opposed? Okay, it's on the floor for a vote. Just hang on one second.
Clear the board, please.
Clear the board. All right, so this, ordinance number four, dated twelve fourteen, two thousand and twenty-two, be it ordained that section two sixteen three five six schedule A, one-way streets of the Utica City Code be amended to include the following, Kent Street northbound from Elizabeth Street to Bleecker Street, headed twelve twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. Be it further ordained proper signage, be erected where necessary on each corner. Your votes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to discharge proposed ordinance number twenty-one, dated twelve seven twenty-two, please.
Second, Mr. President. Cleaning house, the committed home.
We are the fun seros tonight, I believe.
Mm-hmm. And the printer. Any opposed to discharging that ordinance? Discharge.
Mr. President, I'd like the motion to close.
Second.
Okay.
You got a record?
Nah, it's not a record, but it's pretty good.
We got eleven minutes.